The committee of the whole meeting budget hearing will please come back to order. Will the council members that are out there, please join us?
That's why I didn't go nowhere.
Ms. Simon. Okay. Okay, next on our agenda, we are pleased to have Robin Martin from the Family and Children First Council. Somebody should tell Purnell that the C-Tag folks are here. You're the C-Tag person that oversees that program. Okay, please, please proceed. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Robin Martin from Family and Children First Council. For our 2020, 2021 budget, our funding is divided into two mandated areas, service coordination and child well-being, which is youth development. The Office of Early Childhood has the early childhood component of that. We receive state funds that cover 89% of our service coordination component. The remaining 11% is covered by local funds. Local funds are used as a safety net for families that do not meet the criteria for the safety funds but still need, I'm sorry, the state funds but still need assistance. The child well-being funding for youth development is 100% levy funded, and those funds support out-of-school time and transitions, youth leadership/engagement, comprehensive sexual education, youth internships, parent/family engagement, and closing the achievement gap. The office consists of 9.5 staff, and the .5 is the budget officer that we share with the Office of Early Childhood. We currently have two vacancies, and to the question regarding whether or not we have enough staff or need additional staff, we had our first two retirements this past summer, and I can tell you right now, we are struggling to cover their areas. We are in the process of working with the PRC to get those positions filled. The test for one position happened earlier this week, and we are working with them on the test for the other position. In the Ohio State Fiscal Year 2021 budget, the governor launched a multi-system youth initiative, and one of the goals seeks to prevent families from relinquishing custody to receive services. The Family and Children First Council offices across the state are connected to that goal, and this will increase the service coordination work that we do. There is state funding attached to the goal, so we are working with the state to determine if we may be able to draw down additional funds to add another service coordinator to our office to help with that work. Our budget for 2021 is flat. We did make a request that was not funded, and it was a crisis bid to support our service coordination work. In the continuum of service coordination, we have young people who are in crisis, who need assessments that usually take about 15 to 30 days. Oftentimes, our young people are stuck in hospitals because the current crisis bids we have are filled, and so if we had a dedicated crisis bid for service coordination, that would be very helpful to us.
And what was the dollar amount on that request?
It's $250,000.
And is that per year?
Yes.
$250,000 per year. Okay, fine. Okay.
And for the three areas that we, if there were levy funding, that we would ask for funding, out-of-school time, the actual core service of out-of-school time, right now we're able to fund about 25 to 28 neighborhoods, depending on the amount that the individual service providers request. However, we receive 40 requests each time an RFP is released. We have not had an increase on the core service of out-of-school time in over 10 years. The second area is families and schools together. Annually, we are operating parent programming to improve family and child engagement in 17 schools across, right now, five school districts every year, and we run two programs per year, one in the spring and one in the fall. That program also has not seen an increase in over 10 years, and we've had districts reach out to us to expand the program into new areas, and we just have not been able to do it. And then the final request is, as I mentioned, the crisis bid.
Okay.
If you have questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We're open to questions, and Ms. Conwell is first.
To the Chair, to Director Martin, can you provide us with those requests?
Yes.
Your request of your ass, because...
Well, the requests that I just mentioned were related to the question that was asked by Mr. McElheer yesterday, but in the request for the actual budget, I only made one request, and that was the crisis bid, because I didn't know other requests were an option.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vice President Jones.
The crisis bid, help me visualize, where would this bid be?
So, right now, the two providers that offer crisis bid services are, I'm sorry, not Beechbrook, Belfair and Applewood. I'm sure we would have to do an RFP process for all of the local providers, but it would be a local provider that would offer the bid.
I always thought, Robin, I always think of your department in early childhood as if they're the earlier age, and then you kind of pick up where they live off. Is that fair?
Yes.
Now, what is there, I should ask her, Rebecca Dorman, her department, but what is her age range, and where does yours start?
Well, for service coordination, my age range for children who have early intervention issues, so that's developmental disabilities, I am birth to 21, according to state rule.
Okay.
When it comes to the early childhood visiting and UPK, Rebecca's office goes up to when kids finish preschool, and I pick up when they enter kindergarten, so that's for the youth development, early childhood continuum. Service coordination is a little different.
So that's about five years old?
Yes, five or six.
Five or six, and she's under, okay.
And because kids can be five or six, we've never put like an age on it, and so we typically say kindergarten through graduation.
Okay. What is the budget for early childhood?
Budget for early childhood is 18, 18 and 1/2 million.
What is your overall budget?
5.1.
5.1, okay.
And of the 5.1, how much has been for service coordination, and how much has been for child well-being slash youth development?
Because the service coordination money is separate, it's not in my contract line, it's in my behavioral health line, and so for the service coordination funding, we receive $498,897 from the state of Ohio for wraparound services, high-fidelity wraparound services, and that supports service coordination. The 5 point, I think my contract line is about 3.9 million, and all of those funds go toward the youth development portion of our services.
So, the child well-being, youth development is by far the larger share?
Currently, it is, but we do anticipate receiving funds from the state of Ohio for service coordination, given the work that the governor is requesting that we do in the upcoming years.
Further questions?
Yes.
Vice President.
Can you give us just a quick update about closing the achievement gap?
Can you be more specific, once you want me to tell you?
I could. Have you heard from any other superintendent's budget request, an increase of any?
No, I have not.
You have not, okay. So they come to me and my colleagues?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So none of those have been captured in your recommended budget?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Conwell.
To the Chair, to Director Martin, crisis bid, could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure.
I don't think I understand. It's the coordinator, is it someone you're trying to hire, or be able to have the funds available for a bid?
Okay, there's two pieces to this. So there's the bid. So we have young people who are experiencing a crisis because their meds are no longer working. This may be their first mental health episode, and they are in need of crisis stabilization. And so what happens is we would contact a designated provider, and they would do, they would let us know if the bed is available. They do a mini-assessment and come back to us in 24 to 48 hours to tell us what is needed. Typically, the kids are in the bed anywhere from 15 to 30 days, and during that time, we have a group here called the Service Coordination Team. We are meeting with the parent, the provider, and all of the systems that are currently open with the child to start planning on how we're going to, once whatever change is made takes place, how we're going to maintain that change and wrap services around that child once that young person goes back into the community. In order to facilitate that process, the service coordinators from my office actually do the meeting facilitation. So they are bringing their scheduling with the parent, scheduling with the systems, they are writing the plan, working with the systems to make sure that all of the services that they bring to the table are actually brought to bear, and that everything is happening in a timely fashion, so that when that 30-day point hits, that child is ready, or 15-day point hits, that child is ready to step back down into the community.
So, in this 250,000-per-year ask, it's not to provide a new, specific service coordinator just for crisis?
No, no, no. It's for the bed.
Gotcha.
The service coordinator with the funding that they're making available with the state, what I have been told at this point is we will have the ability to draw down some of those funds to cover the cost of staff, and so we are looking to use that staff component from the new state dollars to get a new service coordinator, because now we'll have a lot more meeting facilitation since we are doing the prevention of relinquishment of custody. We would take on the facilitation process for all of those kids. Right now, in our county, we do something called shared cost placement, and in the shared cost placement model, the systems that are involved with the child come to the table, and if the child needs, once you get past the stabilization point, if they need treatment, those agencies come together and co-fund that treatment. Well, what the state is saying now is they're willing to pay for the treatment, but they need the Family and Children First Council office to do the facilitation and the management of the process, so that they're ensuring that they're getting the greatest bang for their buck, and we're actually stepping those kids down and marrying that process with those wraparound dollars that we get, so that we can maintain the kids in the community with their families.
So the state will now fund this process?
Correct.
And how long do you think that, it said eight years?
They have not said, but the budget, as it is set now, is $6 million for State Fiscal Year 20, 12 million for State Fiscal Year 21, and we are currently, all of the SCFCs across the state are participating in a series of meetings to figure out what all of this is going to look like.
And how much in 2021?
12 million, it's going to double.
And this is, of course, all the state of Ohio has to share this part.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Baker.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your work out there. You do a lot and see a lot, and we thank you for that. It may be an unfair question, but I'll ask you, we just had testimony for the UPK, and they're trying to measure now, given that it's a 13-year program. Do you find, given that you begin with five-year-old or kindergarten up until graduation, that the UPK has perhaps relieved you of some of the work that you used to do, because these children are perhaps better prepared going on to their first, second, third, fourth-grade levels, or do you have anything to add, given you pick it up from where they live off?
Well, what I would say is to the question that you asked earlier about the investment, I think the way the investment is sustained is through some of the programs that we offer, because everything does not happen in the school, so a lot of that social, emotional learning actually happens in out-of-school time. So, right now, our out-of-school time is divided up a couple of ways. So we have, I think, the last I checked, the number was we needed 10,000 slots. Through the funds that we have, we cover about 3,000 additional slots. The rest of them are either private pay by the parent, or in some communities, the community raises the money to pay for that. Once the kids go into the slot, they're getting that social, emotional learning in that program, but they're also getting tutoring, and they're getting other components that they need. And I'll give you a personal example. My son is currently in after-school program, actually for eighth grade, which typically the programs stop at sixth grade, and this week, what they have been working on is learning to fill out a job application, because many of them are about to turn 14, which means they can get a work permit, and so they have been working on how to fill out a job application, and how to interview if they were asked to come in for an interview. So it's those other skills that they need that go beyond just the academic day, that happens in the youth development realm.
I hear you, and I get that, and that's great work. I guess I'm just asking, though, because of the pretty significant investment in the UPK, if you find, if you just see a difference, if in your years of being, working with families and kids, and especially those that don't have perhaps some of the disabilities and things, but just the kids perhaps that are at risk, do you see a bump or a relief of, I don't have so much that I need to invest in the six-and-seven-and-eight-year-old because of the foundation that was given to them when they were three and four?
I think it continues. I mean, and I also think it varies based on the community. So what is the community bringing forth to support those families that may not have funding? So, you know, what are direct centers doing? What happens is it's a whole, the whole community has to come together around those kids. I think one of the barriers for us is that we're not always aware of whether or not they were a UPK child or not. The school may know, but in some of our programs, we wouldn't know.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So, Director, what's the current annual spend on C-Tag, and what districts are we currently involved in?
The current number is about 850,000, and I could get you the actual number, I didn't bring that with me, but I can tell you the communities that we're in, Warrensville, Maple, Cleveland Heights, East Cleveland, Garfield, and in the city of Cleveland, we have girl-specific programs at Glenville and East Tech.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Councilman Jones?
Does that also include the dollars for the evaluation?
No.
From two years, how much are the evaluation dollars?
We do not have, currently have any evaluation dollars. We are working with Dr. Harris internally on the evaluation. So basically, what happens is when we were working with CASE, we had a list of information that needs to be collected. A staff person from my office goes out with the schools, works on gathering that information and making sure that we have as few gaps in the data as possible. We've turned that data over to Dr. Harris, and he is currently working to build off the initial report to say how we're doing in that second year, that next year.
Right, so if I kind of go back, CASE Western Reserve, they did the evaluation going back to by, four years ago.
Correct.
So they did it and completed an evaluation. The last biennial cycle, we did it in-house. So we went out...
So we have one year worth of data for in-house. The kids just finished in June, the first year of in-house.
Okay. Do we have, you completed, is there anything that you're able to present to council in terms of?
Not at this time. We're probably going to need a couple more weeks. Dr. Harris is working on it. I met with him yesterday, he's working on it as we speak.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Simon.
Thank you. Just to follow up, a question about UPK, because you were asked about it, anything you've observed, but are you informed and aware of all the studies, multitude of studies, about how valuable and formidable universal pre-K early education is for children at their most?
Absolutely.
The prime time to intervene with children is this period in their lives, and I think there are so many studies out there that support the value of this. Are you aware of those studies?
Yes, and I'm actually living it, because I have a child that I adopted that did not receive, and so I could tell you firsthand as a parent what happens when it doesn't occur.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our lineup to talk about the Office of Reentry, we're going to call up Director Crystal Bryant.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Members of Council, how are you all?
Fine.
All right, thank you for your, hanging, this will not be bad, I promise you. We thank you for your support at the Office of Reentry. So I just want to start by prefacing, kind of explaining that the office is primarily a funder. It's really important, because sometimes people think that we provide direct services. We issue competitive bids, just like our other sister agencies do. With that being said, our budget into the next biennial is flat, we have received no cuts, we have not requested any new awards, and our capacity at this point is six for staff. I have one staff that is out on leave and one position that is vacant, and I'm working with HR now to get that position posted, and we certainly hope to have it filled at least first quarter of 2020. That person is a data person, that position is a data person, and so certainly it is needed and missed. We also have had the benefit of having a public interest fellow, that position expired in August. It is a huge loss to us, but it's a great partnership that we hope to continue in the future with the Cleveland Foundation, so that was a one-year piece of support. So Reentry funds a multitude of things, anywhere from workforce development to housing models to actual staff positions within the court and within adult transitions models, just because the issue of reentry is so massive, right? So because when you think about reentry, when we focus on mass incarceration and what some of the systemic issues are, there is no one way to serve these multiple individuals with this additional barrier. So, one of the things that I've talked about over the last two years is how do I take the resources that we have and stretch them? So because I think it was actually Councilwoman Baker who mentioned, you can't compartmentalize individuals. We have, so Ruth and I may serve the same individual, they might be homeless, they may have a criminal background, they may be addicted, and they receive some services through the board. We're not asking for any additional resources, but what we're asking for is to increase efficiency and collaboration throughout our community. So to move a systems-level workload, what we have to be willing to do is make investments in macro-level work and in strategies. So some of the transitions that you'll see, last year, the Office of Reentry was awarded a $1 million BJA grant that goes over three years. The first year is all for planning, year two starts October 1 of this year, and is now implemented. So over those next two years, it allowed us to implement some of those systems-level strategies, the first one being a reentry clinic that's in partnership with CASE Western.
Just a moment. So, you're talking real fast.
I'm sorry.
This grant was issued by whom?
The grant comes from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. It's a federal award through a bidding process that the Office of Reentry gratefully won and received.
And so your office received this grant?
That is correct, Councilman.
And this grant is aimed at improving coordination of services on the entry, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, fine.
Sorry. All right. So, one of those systems-level opportunities was to implement this new legal clinic. CASE Western Reserve is the new partner for this. This allows individuals to remove some of those barriers in terms of incarceration that we don't often think about. So debt negotiation, housing convictions, child support modifications, things that have consistently kept people down in a space where they can't move forward, they can't get gain for employment, and they can't stabilize their housing situation, that are legal matters, and they are often overseen, and there are gaps in our community. If you make $1 over, you may not be able to be serviced by legal aid, et cetera. So it doesn't have that same cap or barrier on criteria for individuals, so we're hopeful that it serves the system. One of the other things that are coming down the pipeline, we're in the process of contracting with an agency, is Torres Employment's social enterprise model. So the social enterprise model will be a staffing agency for attorneys. Again, it fills that void in terms of systems. There are many attorneys who have skill sets, who don't need a program and just need that job right now, whether it's entry level, temporary, or temp-to-permanent, and so this staffing agency focuses on some of the unique needs of people with incarceration, so sometimes we often say they live in a constant state of crisis. But crisis for them, I think Rebecca actually mentioned this earlier, is not what crisis looks like for us. Sometimes it's just as simple as, I can't pay my supervision fees, all my money is taken from my check as a result of supervision fees, I can't pay child support, I don't have a ride to see my probation officer, and those one-time incidents occur, and then quitting a position, and we're trying to stabilize that market by filling this barrier. There's one more RFP that we're actually reissuing in partnership with our Contracts Division in Health and Human Services, and that is for a community development RFP. It's a little, again, we're investing in a strategy, so it looks a little different. We're working really closely with contracts to help us develop the correct outcomes and make sure the RFP is solid in terms of what we put out into the community, but this opportunity is to build a strategy first across these systems, the housing systems, to think about, what does that look like in the next five to 10 years? What is the actual need for people that are homeless or have unstable housing, that have a background in terms of incarceration? What does the financial investment looks like? And then galvanizing and mobilizing all those individual housing providers to come together and put together their resources with a nice, small investment from us that gets them started, and hopefully looks at how do you serve the system? And so Ruth Gillett has been very helpful in turning over numbers, giving support and data that we didn't have already, and identifying some partners that we may not be aware of in this system. And so essentially, those are some of our major changes, as we get ready to continuously keep moving forward in terms of looking at systems-level work, but still attacking both the micro and macro needs of those returning home from incarceration. And I'm sorry I speak so fast, it's natural, I promise.
So, are you providing any direct services, or is it all being done through funding?
It is all being done through funding.
Okay. And do you know what reentry services are currently being provided to inmates while they're still incarcerated at the county jail? I know that at one point, we were providing reentry services at some of the satellite agencies, but I don't know if we're still doing that, because things have gotten shuffled around a bit.
Yes, so our programming is not the jail's priority at this moment. They still remain a partner for the Office of Reentry. We sustain funding for the adult literacy and GED programming inside of our county jail, and we also have sustained funding for behavioral health services, where intensive outpatient treatment is being provided by our recovery resources at this moment. They also still receive, I believe, a Department of Labor grant, even though that's for the jail to speak for, that provides workforce development services that is being delivered by Torres Employment, and then they have a plethora of other services and community partners who are there on a voluntary basis, in which I'm sure some jail administrators can provide counsel with that list, should you request it.
So, there was a program...
I should have been an auctioneer.
There was, there was a program, I went and toured it a year or two ago. It was either at Euclid or Bedford Heights, and they had, they had an employment program where they, they were working with the inmates and helping them develop employability skills. Do you know if they're still doing that, or are we not doing that anymore?
They are still doing it. At one point, the Office of Reentry was their source of funds for the employment opportunity and workforce. We no longer are their source of funds, but they have maintained that programming. It was, in fact, a Euclid jail. I believe Euclid jail is closing, I believe it's now been transitioned into Bedford jail, so it's not the same...
And who's funding it now?
I believe it's the federal grant with the Department of Labor, and Torres Employment, I believe, is the service provider.
And you said we are funding literacy, and what was the other?
Behavioral health services, so they receive intensive outpatient treatment. Uh, behavioral health services, so they receive intensive outpatient treatment.
Other questions? Vice President Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I go back to, it's probably eight years ago, we created the social, this council sponsored the, funded the social entrepreneurship, uh, pilot, which is the Central Kitchen. And there were others, but Central Kitchen I'm, I'm focusing on. At the time, it, it wasn't simply given funding every year. It was a significant chunk of dollars at that time to create a company. Uh, again, the Central Kitchen, under the Lutheran Metropolitan Ministries. Uh, no more funding was given, but they had a, a, a solid business, building, providing food to the homeless shelters in the area and, uh, apprenticing the reentry population. It still exists. The strength of that was the fact that they didn't even have to have funding every year. It was an ongoing business, making revenue and apprenticing the reentry population. Do you, I would expect they, they're not in your budget simply because there's no dollars. But do you still keep some type of oversight, maintenance? Tell me what you do.
So actually, they are still in our budget, uh, for something a tad bit different. So they, after they did those three social enterprise, uh, models that was in partnership with our wonderful county and the Cleveland Foundation, they created a spin-off of the Central Kitchen called Chopping for Change. So over the years, the Office of Reentry has continued to make an investment in Chopping for Change. The uniqueness of Chopping for Change that's different from a Central Kitchen is that these ladies are actual inmates. They're not in your community. They are, um, housed as inmates in Northeast Pre-Release Center, which is a women's prison on 30th. And those women are allowed to leave out of the institution during the day, supervised by a corrections officer, go at, go to Lutheran Metropolitan Ministries and actually receive this training, in which by the end of the training, they receive a Safe Serve certification. Um, and through, and through various new, unique partnerships this year, they were able to open a, a different spin-off called Second Chance Kitchen. They actually operate our, um, cafeteria in Virgil Brown. And so there are 90 days, I believe, pre-release. They get to work in that kitchen, open up a Second Chance bank account and begin to be reintegrated into the community. So we continue that investment, which allows us to pay for the students' training, um, even though the, the goal is for them to be at some point a sustaining, a sustaining business model on their own. So we've talked to the organization multiple times. We have a great relationship. And they've talked about, uh, methods of sustainability in terms of becoming a formalized training program where students can use Pell Grants, et cetera. But right now, we are still making that investment in Chopping for Change.
How many, over the years, if you know off the top of your head, how many individuals have we apprenticed through the, uh, in the reentry population over the years? Or in the last year, any, any facts you might know?
I would love to say I was there great and I knew it, but I do not. The capacity for their program runs at about 15 to 20 for those inmates. I don't know how they cycle them, though. So, um, I'm sure our last HHS report may have some reference to the actual numbers, but throughout the total years, I would have to get you that number. And then there's other various, uh, types of apprenticeships we've funded. There have been one-time supports through state money, where we partnered with Torres Employment and did some apprenticeship programs. And there's actually a small stipend right now built into that federal grant that we have, working with Torres Employment, to again, look at people that have, they are past the programming point and they're ready to receive some of those certifications for trades, et cetera. So I'd be happy to, um, think about collectively how we can build some synergy and give you the numbers that you need to support what you're asking.
Great. So I'd, I'd like to know how many served, uh, how effective this has been in, in their lives? Have, have those who have been apprenticed, have they been able to go on and work in the food service industry or start their own restaurant or?
I think that they have. So Lutheran Metropolitan Ministries has been, um, a great partner when they think about sustainability. They've partnered with an organization by the name of True Freedom Ministries. True Freedom Ministries, um, has two wings. They have their philanthropic wing and then the owner, um, owns a lot of real estate. He's a big real estate investor, has a development company. And so he also owns some larger restaurants in downtown Cleveland. So the partnership allows for True Freedom Ministries to, uh, provide jobs for these individuals. Once they're actually outside of the institution, they work at places like the Marble Room, um, and I, I can't think of the other name of the restaurant, but they have provided actual job placements.
First time I heard the name, True, True Ministries.
Freedom Ministries, yes.
True Freedom Ministries. Are there other opportunities to scale up or partner with the faith-based community in general with the, with the Office of Reentry?
There is always opportunities. So a part of this, again, service coordination. Um, at one point, a couple of years back, myself and Councilwoman Brown thought about how do we uniquely engage a faith-based organization? The former DSAS Director, uh, Director Jones actually gave me a blueprint for what it is that he utilized. But because staff capacity is low right now, we haven't been able to, um, focus on that. However, it will be something we're looking at doing in the future as we, uh, consistently rebuild this coalition for that collective impact model and effort.
Do you still have Citizen Circle? I see the flyer, but that, that still exists?
So the Citizen Circle does exist, but that's not a program of the Office of Reentry. That's a community-based initiative. It's actually started from the Ohio Department of Rehab and Corrections and goes throughout the state of Ohio. They have done some adjusting too. It's very similar to what Director Osicki talked about earlier with the peer coaching and mentoring. There are, there have been greater models, um, since the development of Citizen Circle. And so now we're exploring, what does that look like? Because again, at scale, we have to look at how do you focus on a system itself that causes some of the root issues and then some of the services that need to be delivered to clients, um, to get them through the barriers. So it's a lot to tackle, but if I have the community behind me, certainly I have more than enough staff.
And this is my last question.
Sure.
The, the Going Home to Stay books, you know, I've, I've used them. I, I take them into the, the heart of public housing.
Yeah.
They, they, um, and just in my district in general, and I can't keep them. People call me, ask about them, they want them. Uh, what, what does the budget say in terms of that book now? Are we going digital? Are we, what, what's going on?
We are digital. So, uh, effectively, effective October 1, it has been digitized. This was the year for the new vendor to actually, uh, get it up and running in terms of, of a website. It is no longer called Going Home to Stay. It's called the Exodus Planner. We had a large release in Cuyahoga County, where the vendor had a large, large relation in Cuyahoga County in September. Um, they showed how you work it. They asked vendors who were missing to take an opportunity to sign up. They talked about the significance of impact of the platform and how do we connect? And they also worked with three institutions to get it inside the institutions to start some of the planning pre-release. So I know one of the concerns was that you wouldn't have this, this paper document to take inside or take to things. Because a lot of the times, you may not get an opportunity to touch a concern to formerly incarcerated person, but you do get to interface with their family or their grandmas or someone who could pass that information on to them. So we're in the final phase of their contract for this year. We're looking at how do, how do they create a downloadable guide for us in terms of print? The Office will take responsibility, um, in terms of payment to print that for you, should you need it, when you go out into the community and you make a request. And also, um, in addition to us looking at making it downloadable and printable, should we have little hard cards or hard, you know, hot cards to pass out so people know, hey, you can go to this guide or you could go online to the Exodus Planner, et cetera.
So no books?
No books yet. But no, it, it truly is. That's the last, it's actually in contract writing. So that's the last part of it for discussion for them to create.
It's hard for me to see it work until I actually see it work.
I know.
My first thought that comes to mind is the digital divide. And it's all digitized, but can those in my district, the, the lowest-income families, are they, who, many who do need the book, are they still gonna get it now that it's online and all those things?
So your concerns were, were never forgotten, which is why it's contractual. Did they have to think about a way for us to do this? Uh, one of the times that the vendor was here, they actually wanted to interface with you all to discuss some of those matters, see what your concerns were, that way they can ensure that they addressed all of the concerns. Uh, we were not able to meet, with the schedules just did not exist. But hearing them again, I can make sure I have a check on them when we meet about this last portion. So we actually have a meeting every month until we get to the end of the contract and they fulfilled all the requirements per the milestones. So that has, I have not forgotten you, I promise. It will be hard to see how it works, but that's the, that's the beauty in being able to tweak things and go back and, um, do the things that we need to have to support the community as well as you all who are on the front line for us.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Conwell.
Through the chair to Director, could you go into what the, uh, Department of Development, the loan, the techno assistance, the micro enterprise?
I certainly can, uh, Councilwoman Conwell. So when we think about systematic structures and also attacking a real issue, I always like to say when I do talks about reentry is that reentry is just a definition of transition of an individual forming an institution back into the community. And if we consistently, uh, attack the definition, we will continue to see higher recidivism numbers because we're not addressing the root causes of what these issues are. So since the root causes are structural in nature and one is poverty, the best way to address poverty, especially if you're not able to get an opportunity in workforce, is be able to own and start your own business. So there are some studies, there are models of, um, individuals who are formerly incarcerated, uh, seeking these opportunities in terms of training. And then after training, um, being granted these loans, almost like a Shark Tank model, where they get this grant money, they get loans and they're able to start businesses. If the businesses are healthy and they grow, then they're, they're able to make other formerly incarcerated people self-sufficient. So we, the Office of, the County Office of Development has a contract with ECDI already existing for its scope of services. Um, and so what we're asking to do is put funding or resources into that existing contract with ECDI, who is a small business lender, who does some technical assisting and coaches for, coaching for small businesses, but modifying the scope of work specific to the needs of formerly incarcerated persons. So, um, at ECDI, they're able to pin down the actual number of individuals they have served or given loans to that are formerly incarcerated. And the hope is that if those individuals come back and would like to scale their business at this point, this opportunity to have this grant will support them in their ass to financial institutions to mitigate their risk and be able to get that loan to scale their businesses. It would provide more hands-on technical assistance and coaching for individuals that are formerly incarcerated with their unique needs in terms of getting loans and starting businesses. And it will also provide dollars to create micro enterprises. So a micro enterprise would maybe like landscaping. It's one of the most effective businesses that you can grow for probably the smallest dollar amount. If I have $500 starting off, I can get a lawnmower, a few tools and build my business cars and build a business. But if I'm a formerly incarcerated person, I really may not have $500. So the grant money of micro enterprises to seed some of these small businesses, um, is what this opportunity is for.
What is the dollar amount that you ask to be put into this?
We are asking that 50,000 be put into it for, uh, year one and year two.
Was that approved?
No. So the, the, we're still crafting the scope of services because it's not our, our contract. We're just, um, creating, um, the scope of services for them. It is the developments contract. I believe that contract will be in April of 2020. So it won't start in January 1, it'll start April.
Okay.
I don't know why their timeline is so, but it is.
Okay, and what would be your, uh, how would, what would be your, what would be your matrix, uh, for this? How would you, since ECDI is doing things, how are you gonna over, be oversight of, if this does go, go forward?
So we're in the process of researching various metrics now that we like to see in terms of this, whether it's the number of businesses that are created through the micro enterprise, how long they're sustained, how they're able to generate self-sustaining revenue. Those are all the things we begin to look into. Um, how many hours of technical assistance and coaching that they provide? But no final numbers have been done as we have not gotten into the actual written, the actual finalization of the contracts.
Okay, so when Department of Development comes before us, this was one of the, is this part of their ask or part of your ask included in their budget?
It will be our dollars going into their budget to support these individuals. And so when they come up with an ask, it is likely that I will be alongside them to present what this ask is.
Okay, so you need, the 100,000 should go into your budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, to follow up on that, is this an item that would be funded in your budget or are you requesting a $50,000 per year carve-out out of the ED budgets, uh, contract with ECDI?
No, it's something that will be funded out of our budget. So that's again, one of those opportunities for collaboration. When we think about systems and investment of how do we partner even across county and helping them understand better the needs of those that are formerly incarcerated. And then it's having some partnership and monitoring and ensuring that we have some level of success for individuals that have unique needs.
So, uh, so this is actual, actually an additional item that you requested that was, that has not been approved so far?
So this is not an additional item. One of the things that I've had to do in terms of being cautious over our funding and being a good, um, making sure I'm a good steward over public funds, is thinking about what it is that we already fund and how do we need to transition? Because what happens sometimes, I think, um, one of the council members mentioned it earlier, is government gets in a practice of refunding the same things that was supposed to be one-time and therefore we create marriages with institutions. And so I have, um, a limited dollar amount. I can't create marriages. I sometimes have to break off those marriages, ensure their sustainability other places and hope that they are, uh, geared up to serve in other capacities. I have a limited amount of resources and so as I transition dollars, I have to transition them slowly, recognizing there are people on the other end of these dollars and numbers, um, but certainly make that transition. And that's what our office has been doing these last two years.
So, uh...
So it's not new dollars, it's a transition resource.
So let me bottom line that.
Okay.
Are you saying that, that if you're in fact able to do this, that something else will be eliminated and free up to $50,000 a year so you can do this program?
That is accurate.
That's what you're saying, okay. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, we're, uh, we're in the, we're in the last inning and, and we are pleased and, and proud to bring up our new Law Director, Director.
First of all, that's a tough act to follow.
To, uh, tell us about the Law Department.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, first of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to reschedule. I think some of you know I'm going in for what I consider unscheduled maintenance on Monday and I'm gonna be down under the weather for a few weeks. So thank you. Uh, and I, uh, thanks again to, uh, Clerk Schmattzer and her staff. Uh, you have copies of my statement there so we can read along if you like. The Law Department's budget for the 2020 biennial is essentially status quo. The only significant change, uh, is the, the 2% COLAs that'll be rolling in each of the next couple of years. The contract line in our budget includes our matrix software, which is our case management software. Uh, there's a, a really basic form of some e-discovery software in there. And there's also the, the LexisNexis services, the legal research services contract. It runs through our department, but that's a county-wide contract. It's, uh, our office uses it, your office uses it, the IG office uses it, uh, Public Defender and the Prosecutor's Office use, all use that service. There are 25 FTEs in the Law Department. Uh, we have one administrative assistant, two paralegals, two, uh, claims adjusters and 20 attorneys, including myself and the Director of Risk Management. Uh, this budget, however, only covers 17 of those attorneys. And one of those attorneys is housed in public work, one of the 17 is housed in public works and then they reimburse us annually for her services. Uh, those other three attorneys that make up the difference, two of those are funded through HHS and the other one is funded through DCFS. Uh, we do need to fill the risk manager position. I'm happy to say we've got those interviews scheduled for tomorrow before I'm out, so. Uh, there were, there are no new initiatives in this budget. There are two asks that I made that didn't get funded. Uh, one was for an additional attorney that, uh, I kind of view as code enforcement, to support both the, um, Consumer Affairs Office, which has, you know, a lot of different services they provide, but of course they're gonna be dealing with the plastic bag ordinance come, uh, January 1. And then this, hopefully somebody who could also, uh, assist with the Human Rights Commission. I think I'm gonna have to, after we have these interviews for, uh, tomorrow for our risk management, I'm gonna have to kind of rethink how we can do that, if there's some way I can rebalance the, the duties within the department to cover those, uh, cover those duties. And then the other ask I had was for software to help us out with, um, uh, with managing the public records. Our public records requests have increased quite dramatically, particularly over this last year. As of, uh, the end of September or so, we had about, uh, 15% more requests just in this year than we did in 2017 and 7% more than we had in 2018. So there's a, that, that increase in volume has obviously slowed things down a little bit. Uh, there are some software packages out there that we can use to help process these things and make things move faster, routinize the process over all of the different departments and make sure things can, we can keep things on schedule. Uh, what we're gonna be doing, I think during the last quarter of this year, first quarter of next year, is do some RFP, maybe an RFQ, to find out what different packages may be out there to help us process those things. Maybe there's some way we can, uh, bundle it up with some of the e-discovery stuff and maybe even partner up with the Prosecutor's Office if they could, if they would find some of these things useful. So, that's my five minutes, right?
So, uh, so Director, am I correct that the, uh, the 75,000 for the additional attorney position, that would be, uh, per year, does that include benefits?
Uh, it would not, no.
No, so benefits would be additional.
Yes.
So it's probably, uh...
Another 30%, 25, 30% I'll make that.
But somewhere close to 100,000 when you include benefits.
Correct.
Now, the software, I presume, is one-time?
Uh, actually, a lot of these software packages, you end up buying licenses every year to use their online services because a lot of it ends up getting stored in the cloud. So there would be a reoccurring charge of that. I, I'm not exactly sure what it, that number would be. And again, that's where we, we wanna do some RFP, RFQ on this.
Would you find out and get a better number for us on what the initial cost would be and what the, uh, what the annual, uh, subscription cost would be?
Certainly.
Questions, colleagues?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Tua.
Thank you. Uh, through the chair, um, uh, so as far as the, uh, risk management position, um, so you're in the process of interviewing folks for that? of interviewing folks for that job?
The, the first interview's will be tomorrow.
Okay, and, and is that already budgeted then, the risk management?
Yes.
Okay, that's...
Yes, that's included in the, the 17, yes.
Okay. And then this individual for, potential individual employee, the, at the $75,000, you envision them doing what beyond, with respect to the plastic bags you mentioned?
Well, Mr. Chairman of the Councilmen, there is an enforcement component to the plastic bag ordinance that could require us in the end of going into court.
Okay.
So, so there's things like that, and there's also other enforcement actions that the Consumer Affairs folks are needing some help with, so.
Okay. All right, just curious. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Baker?
Uh, just to follow up on that, is there enough work putting aside the two new initiatives that you can keep a full-time attorney busy with the several initiatives that the Office of Consumer Affairs may have? Because we may find that there may not be any work that's needed for the two new initiatives of the plastic bag or human rights. So what else are you keeping a full-time person busy with coming to the Office of Consumer Affairs?
Well, there are some little litigation things we pick up and then, and now and then, but again, I, I set a fairly low salary for that position, because I'm, I see it really as an entry-level position.
Okay.
There, believe it or not, there are people who come out of law school who want to do this for a living, work in the public sector. So that's kind of why I was targeting something at the, at the lower end of, of the scale. And then that person could grow into other, other, other services throughout the department as well.
But this $75,000 plus benefits is a full-time position? You think you can keep that person busy?
Oh, yes.
Working only for the Office of Consumer Affairs?
Only.
Well, that's what you're asking, to support the Office of Consumer Affairs.
Some of that depends on how the plastic bag thing goes.
Okay. The second is, on your second request, don't, do you think we're hopefully on the backside of public requests, and that the need for continual public requests will probably diminish? That we're in a different phase right now of what they ever use the public request information for, we're now on to a different level of, of, and that this may not be needed?
Chairman of the Council, when this has been increasing so much over the last couple of years, I, I don't think so.
Really?
I don't think so. I mean, a lot of folks are now using this instead of typical discovery, so.
So it's for a variety of different requests, public requests that are out there for...
Certainly, yes.
...all kinds of things.
It's a good example of an unfunded mandate.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Conwell.
I was going to say, mandated to do that. To the Chair, to the Law Director, how many lawyers are in the Law Department now? When we first started up under the first administration, we were attorney-rich, so I've heard that there's not as many lawyers as I thought there were anymore.
Uh, Councilman...
In just in our law department.
There are, there are 16, and we would be adding the, sorry, there are actually, no, there are, there are 20 when you include the three that are in HHS and DC, DCFS. There are 20, well, 19 would I add, need to add the 20th as the, the Director of Risk Management.
Okay. And so you're asking to, I'm, I'm a little unclear, you're asking to, of course, the risk manager position, and I will be a lawyer, so that's an additional one, so that will put you at 20 at that point, right?
That would, that would max us out, correct.
The risk management position is already authorized and has been a part of the Law Department, it's only that that position is currently vacant.
Correct.
I'm, I'm clear, I'm...
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I'm clear on that, that, that would just be 20, it just took so long for us to get somebody. And the other will be two, two additional lawyers, is your ask?
No, no, just one.
One person that is good in human rights and...
Would, would, would work, work in that area and the, the consumer, consumer affairs area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we've got it laid in.
That lawyer includes you as Law Director?
The 20 includes me, yeah.
Yes, it does. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, just real quick, I know we want to go.